You guys ready?
All right, looks good. So the regular council meeting on Monday, no Tuesday, September sixth.
All right, roll call please Leslie.
Mayor Loughlin.
Here.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Good Tyler.
Here.
Goldman.
The motion to approve tonight's agenda.
The move.
Second, second my jury, the all of them in favor say aye.
Aye.
Deconsent agenda consists of the minutes, approving the minutes of August fifteenth, regular council meeting. Approving the minutes of August fifteenth, a special council meeting. Approving a special event permit for the West Branch High School homecoming parade on Wednesday, I think that is. Approve a West Branch Fire Department appointment. And approving Christine Hummerich House to the tree commission claims for September sixth. Motion.
The move. Second.
Glad to see another fire department person. Anybody, any other comments?
I have a question. So on this special event permit application, we have the application brought for us. But for city office use approved by date of approval, I've got no check offs for the administration, for the West Branch Fire, for the police department, for the library, and other people who need to be approving this before it comes in front of us.
It has been, sorry.
I, I have the copy here. I keep a copy online. I give you the original copy. We have everyone's approval except for Kevin Stulman did not sign off on it yet. I did send a message and no one responded back. Public Works. I think that's a verbal yes, that's okay. And Melissa was out last week.
You just want to make sure we're coordinating with everybody. So, okay. Any other comments? Okay, Leslie loves to vote on consent.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Sexton. Goldman.
Yes.
Good Tyler.
All right, presentation's open forum. Jesse Simon just texted me. I don't know why I looked at my phone. Jesse, are you on? You want to give a CDG update?
I am, yes. Thank you guys. Sorry, I didn't get my notes in, in time due to a grant deadline last week. So I'll give you the, the quick rundown of what's going on with West Branch Community Development Group since my last presentation. So I did receive the latest market snapshot, which is some great data that we get for local revitalization efforts from Main Street Iowa every year. That's been shared with Adam and Roger. I believe it's added to your city website if you want to look at that in great detail. In a nutshell, it reiterates what we know is that West Branch is experiencing growth, expecting more growth. And we are already seeing some changes in our local demographics, generally skewing a little younger than previous years. But take a look at that if you have a chance. Other quick rundowns from the last few months, we had a great fundraiser during hometown days. We raised three thousand two hundred and twelve dollars selling raffle tickets at the fire station both nights. And that was the first time that we've done that in a few years and pretty easy and successful for us. So we intend to do that again. And we also have been selected to receive a branding services grant from Main Street Iowa this year. It's a fifteen thousand dollar value for our organization. And that will allow us to rebrand from our current name and logo. And we will be going through a whole rebranding process over the next two months. And we'll have some opportunities for public input and input from community leaders like yourselves. So stay tuned for an email or an opportunity to hop on a little focus group. They'll all be on Zoom. Pretty easy, but when we walk away from that process, we will have a new organization logo for ourselves, as well as a destination logo that can be used by any, any organizations that are promoting West Branch as a place to come and eat, shop, explore, visit, live, work, all of the above, and a full brand kit to direct how we implement that for greatest impact. So we're really excited about that. We also completed our Main Street Challenge Grant application, which is why I was so busy last week. So we submitted that on Friday afternoon. We requested a hundred thousand dollars this year to help transform the old Presidential Motors Building from the previous gas station and auto shop into a full-service restaurant space to become home to the new extended serving cafe. We won't know until the middle of October if we've received that award, but I do think it was a really competitive application. So we're hopeful. Our twenty twenty Challenge Grant project is complete. You've probably noticed that the upper block looks sparkling and wonderful now. And we are in the process of submitting all the reports and getting reimbursement for that project as well. Coming up next, we are hosting our quarter three coffee and collaboration. That's our quarterly business networking event. It's on Monday, September twelfth at nine AM at the Rummel Center. If any of you are able to come, we'd love to have you. You can RSVP to me. Well, we are working in collaboration with the library, Parks and Rec, and some other local organizations for Fall Fest. So on our end, we'll be hosting sidewalk sales and the scarecrow contest on Main Street. And we also have a story walk and an outdoor movie with Parks and Rec in the library. So we're really excited to all be working together for some fun community fall festivities as well. We'll also go back to trick or treat on Main Street being one hour prior to citywide trick or treating this year. So we're excited to get everybody back downtown for that. And of course, a Christmas past is set for the first weekend in December, December second and third this year. The committee will begin meeting this month already. And I did hear today that the cost for our traditional and beloved horse drawn carriage rides is rising significantly this year, at least five hundred dollars over last year due to fuel prices and staffing shortages. I looked back at my notes and it looks like the city contributed three thousand dollars last year. So I would love to hear a little bit of conversation about what's in your budget this year, or if there's any wiggle room before we start soliciting sponsors for that. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
A lot known on.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot, Jesse. You're busy.
I have a question just out of curiosity.
That.
Twelve years on the, almost twelve years on the council, I think we've rebranded Main Street.
Twice.
Twice. This will be the third time.
Well.
How long is the expected life expectancy of a brand?
The last time we rebranded was, I believe, in two thousand thirteen. So it's been a bit. So the first one was the original branding when the, when we got Main Street accreditation. So then we were called Main Street Iowa. There was a rebranding around two thousand thirteen, if my, if my memory serves me, to me, to Community Development Group. We will see in this process if we should change our name or keep our name or what, but we all know what the changes that are happening in West Branch. There's a lot of confusion about development meaning something different now, since there's truly so much development be happening outside of Main Street. And our focus right now remains on our historic Main Street district. So we'll see what that looks like. Great question. We can ask the branding specialist that we have been granted his services for. I'd say in my other work that ten years is, is pretty good legs for a brand. So it's time for a refresh, even if we don't change the name, a new logo will be good for us.
Good.
I'm on pins and needles for the challenge grant.
Me too.
That would be really nice to have.
Um, anybody anything else? All right. Thanks for your hard work, Jesse.
Yeah, can I push you for a gut reaction on asking for an increase for Christmas past funding?
It's not hard. We only, we have to talk about what's in the budget.
I would tell you, Jesse, no.
It's for the.
Just to be.
We're still in for the three, right?
Correct.
Okay, I couldn't remember if we actually penciled it in this year because in previous years we'd had to go back and find it from somewhere else for Christmas past. So we're moving in the right direction. If there's at least three that's penciled in for this event.
Anything more than we've done in the past, we would not be doing anymore. But in terms of that thousand dollar agreement and the three thousand or whatever we give for the Christmas pass, correct, would be fine. But yeah, if the price increases, gonna be at least firm, no recommendation from me anyways.
Sounds good. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Jesse.
Okay, public hearing, non-consent agenda. Item A is to set a public hearing date of October third, twenty-two, to consider a request for rezoning of one fifty-four Ort Street from R one to R two. Motion, please. It's just to set up a public hearing. We'll give time to second. However, you want to do that.
I'd like to have a little bit more of a clarification.
Um. Brad owns the lot.
That's why I combined one five two, one five four. My houses.
I understand that. I under, but I don't understand why we're, we're trying to rezone an R one lot to an R two. We have to rezone one way or another because both of those parcels are two different zones. So no matter what, we would have to rezone.
Because one lot can't be two.
One, correct. One is R one and the other one is R two.
For young both of them, I don't understand why they can't be separated lot.
Because if he wants to build a structure, say a mother law or build a bigger garage onto the new lot, they have to be one lot. You can't.
One slot.
You cannot have an accessory structure on a residential lot without a primary.
So we've changed their ordinance because I know of one, yeah, I know of one in town that has a lot that's got a garage on it with a house right beside it. And the guy owns both lots.
Was the, if the house.
On Downey.
On Downey Street?
That's where mine is.
On.
The guy owns the lot right next to him, but the garage cleared out the bottom of the hill and the house is sitting on another lot.
How long ago was it built?
When was that?
Was there a house there and they took the house down where the garage was? So that we have one of those over on Main Street also.
It's an empty lot. Yep.
Has that lot been combined into, the two lots combined into one lot?
That's what I'm asking. Why do they have to be combined? I mean, you can't build a garage on that lot.
In our current zoning code, you cannot have an accessory structure without a primary structure in any R, our lot.
And I can, I can give you a good explanation why. At least going forward, we're talking about making sure that new growth pays for itself. I'm still in the middle of doing some of my financial analysis, but it's not a good idea in new subdivisions. If someone buys a lot and doesn't do anything with it, or doesn't put a primary building on there. Because you're talking, my initial estimate, it costs, it takes about fifty years to pay for the infrastructure on our current tax basis. I gotta run all that stuff.
What we're saying is you buy a lot, build a house on it, and you want the lot beside you so nobody builds on that. We're saying, we can't do that because I know of another lot that's in a brand new development that did the same thing. There's plenty of them in town.
You can buy one. You can buy one next to you, but you cannot put.
Put something on.
Put something on it.
But what you're saying is we want, we're trying to encourage somebody to build something on.
That's, that's not, those are. Okay, so what you're talking about is essentially can someone buy it and just do nothing with it? In our current code of ordinances, that's correct. You can't buy it and then put a garage on it. Has to be, there has to be a primary residential structure first. There is no ordinance that says you can't just buy an empty lot and keep it there so no one can build next to you. That has not been discussed at planning and zoning at this current time. It is something that they should consider if we're talking about growing smart financially, but that is not in the books currently.
Well, at the end of the day, you don't have the right to tell somebody they buy a lot that they have to do something, but if they choose not to do it, something, but I mean, I don't have the conscience to be able to tell somebody if you got the money to buy a lot, you don't want, you just want to sit there and you can't do that.
They can. They can mow it for eternity. They don't have to do something. It's just if you gotta build something on it, like a garage, that's not allowed.
I get that.
On Downey, we would have to research that. I.
Is this, is it the last house on the right?
Awesome little red house. Sold them that lot.
That helps.
Yeah. I just, I'm, I'm not in favor of rezoning this single, single R one house to an R two lot. Just, just for the fact that if something ever happened to this house, then somebody could come in there and be able to do something.
The lot you're referring to is one lot that has a garage that may have been at one time, but it's now combined into one park lot.
Yeah. Okay, so they combine.
Yeah, which is what Brad's wanting to do. He wants to combine the lot.
It was not a one lot to an R one. This is an R two to a R one.
Yeah, this is something they sit next to each other.
So Brad wants the opportunity to potentially build, I don't know, a mother law suite.
I mean, I'm not gonna do anything. All I wanna do really is put a pool on it. That should be able to do. I just want to, someday I might build a house on it. I don't, I don't know what, or you know, he's bought it for investments down the road. I can always say pull down, build a house, whatever. You know, I'm just trying to get some.
With a pool, with a pool comes an accessory pergola or whatever. I don't know. You can't cross, you gotta stay.
I'll stay, correct. So I guess my question would be, why wouldn't we go the other way?
To R ones?
Or, yeah, make an R one.
R two is more flexible. And it's already a, in R two and R one neighborhood. So you might as well give them flexibility. It's not like it's an R one neighborhood where you're talking, you know, perfect example, where you're talking single families next to a pond or next to a park. This is a R one and an R two neighborhood. So if he wants more flexibility, if Brad wants more flexibility, you're gonna get more flexibility in R two.
Okay, we're just setting the date.
Yeah, I know.
Any other comments, questions? Otherwise we can vote. Let's vote to set the date October third.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Goldman.
Yes.
Good Tyler.
Yes.
And that's a council rezon public hearing, not a P and Z public thing.
P and Z will happen on, on the twenty seventh.
That's already.
Yeah, we were able to do a combined notice because of the dates and the times.
Okay, so I have a question just from my own reference. So the Catholic Church ever sold the lot on the south side of Maine? I can't buy that and not build on it.
You can buy it.
Buy it and not build on it.
And not build on it. You just mow it and maintain it. Correct. You could do that currently. Yes.
Okay.
Want to build a shed.
Oh, I've already got that on the other one on the other side. So I'm grandfathered in.
All right, item two, city public hearing of October third, twenty-two. To consider request for rezoning two twenty-two North Forest Street from R three to P U D. And also included is a parcel along the east side of Wapsi Creek owned by the city of West Branch from Park one to the same P U D. Motion, please.
The move. Second.
Any comments? So what we're gonna do with that parkland is raid a permanent use, but I believe. Right now we're considering. Fine. Any other questions? Let's go.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Good Tyler.
Yeah.
Stulman?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. We got one more public hearing. Setting date for public hearing October third, twenty-two, for amending the Historic Preservation Commission ordinance, chapter twenty-five of the West Branch Code of Ordinance.
Second.
Okay, this is an important. Put up a stance that left out of a new codification. Is that all we're doing here?
Tell me more, we'll discuss.
Yeah. Okay. The objection said in public hearing, otherwise we'll vote. Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller.
Yes.
Good Tyler.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
All right, resolution twenty-two dash seventy-eight, approving the temporary use agreement with Bedrock LLC for temporary brush pile. Motion.
The move. Second. This still gets us to the point where our residents still don't have a place to take care of, other than the curb.
It would be the water tower, correct?
South Water Tower.
Is that still, is that open?
We're letting people take stuff. We're not like advertising them, but if somebody calls and says they have a thing, we'll let them take it there. And that's what we can take.
But they need, they need to call you ahead.
I mean, if somebody called, yes, I'm on, because we haven't advertised this open up its spot.
No.
Yeah.
But then you'll hesitate. We'll have to transport over to this bedrock site. I thought they wanted the partnerships.
Well, they, the stuff that's already. But that also to make it viable to actually bring a chipper up there, you're gonna need a lot more than what you got there to bring a chipper. Nobody's gonna bring a chipper there for half a month. Right, right.
Okay.
So I have a question just out of curiosity. So the one who bought this property, it's Rold's rent. So who, who are we getting our agreement from? Is it from Rold or is it from Bockenstedt?
This is south of Rold. South of Rold.
Good. So Bockenstedt is Bedrock.
So we're adding them to our insurance policy.
As a temporary use site, yes. There's no, no additional charge. It's just, it's a standard, you do some type of agreement like this, it's standard that they cover you and you cover them. We have the same insurance agent, so it's the same insurance company.
So my thought would be is at some point we need to figure out how much you want up there. It's water tower to make it feasible to grind? Or do we just bury what's there? For the most part, we're falling. Yeah. Most people aren't taking stuff out there. It's us thinking about. So. It has made more, may have for the yard waste pickup, but everybody using bags, so it makes it, it doesn't take it. It takes about the same amount of time. It's just more gross. It's just that people are actually bundling their stuff, using the yard waste bags, doing it how we've been asked.
Or they're loaded up and taking it out in the country and dumping it.
Yeah.
Wild cedar bush is getting big.
Again? No, we're not allowed to use that. Okay. Any other comments on the temporary brush pile? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Good Tyler.
All right, twenty-two dash seventy-nine, directing the city attorney to file an action pursuant to section six fifty-seven A point one zero B. Give me a motion, give me a motion someone.
So moves, so moves.
Is that Kevin's?
Yeah.
Oh.
Kevin's not muted.
Okay.
We have a second.
Um.
Try to stay focused on your second.
We got a motion in a second to direct the city attorney to file a action two oh three East, apartment to two oh three East Green Street. Everyone understand what this is?
Have there been any communication with him?
I have, I had chief, the first time we talked, he hand delivered a letter and we've tried mailing an email. When it, when we mail, it gets kicked back. The second time when I sent a notice, chief was there with me and I said if he didn't comply or work with us, this is the route the city was gonna go. That's all recorded. It was pretty, I was pretty firm that if you don't work with us, this is probably what's gonna happen. We're not gonna just keep finding you. We're eventually gonna seek title. We know that he didn't live it. We know he doesn't live in the property. We know he doesn't have access to water. We have all that information. So, and that was in person. I told him that. Yes, that was a couple of months ago, but he has yet to reach out since then. And that court date he had was a no show. He did push one date back for health reasons and then the second date he didn't go to. So.
It's not like he's not been notified. He knows all this is going on.
Correct, correct.
All right, so we have until September tenth, Saturday.
That was the court's, that was the court's thirty days.
Okay, so we're just. So he's had his thirty days. He will have.
All right. Yes.
My concern is this. What's the, what's the end game? I mean, we acquired this property, then what?
If we were to tear it down.
Okay.
I would. Also can be.
Or operate for sale.
I, I would, yes, I would, I would have somebody go through it and see if it's.
So regardless, regardless, we've got, we're gonna have to put thousands of dollars in cleaning it up to, to sell it.
No. No, that is for a buck.
So and as. If it's worth anything, so and as this.
Because the way I look at it, if somebody can rehab that building, we, we benefit from the tax. If we don't, we tear it down, it's never gonna have anything on there again. I mean, if you like.
Pickleball card.
Well, I mean, but that's what I'm getting at is what's the, what's the end game here? I mean, you know, I understand it's the ISO or I understand.
One way or the other, it's gonna need to get rehabbed.
But if you take, you take, take it away from them, what's this gonna cost us in the long run? And if it ends up getting tore down, it's going to cost us in the long run.
It'd be preferable to sell it then, right?
And I did look up the most updated FEMA maps and it is in the hundred year flood plain, not floodway. So if we were to demolish it, it is buildable. To the east of it is not, but that property is.
Where else besides, it's in a flood.
Correct, that. But, and I asked attorney Olson too, like how much it would cost and, or if we had to pay him, if we had to do the normal appraisals, get appraisals. And he says, no, the only, if, if, correct me, Kevin, the only way if, only if we make a profit, do we give anything to the owner, correct?
Uh, under this law, that's a, that's what the condemnation law says. Under this law, we get title free and clear and he's out completely. Doesn't matter. We, if we sold the lot for ten thousand dollars, we get to keep the money.
And what we could do is do an RFP too as well. If it could be rehabbed, we can RFP it out. Take proposals. And.
I just don't wanna inherit another headache. I mean, if five hundred dollars is, it would be a big deal where we can't pay for the carriages, then what, what are we gonna take this responsibility on for? It may cost way more than that.
But it's an ISO, so he's not gonna clean it up. Somebody's gonna clean it up. It's gonna have to be a.
At some point, somebody's gonna get tired of paying them. They're getting paid.
So, I mean, if, if this happens, we advertise it for sale, first of all, I think.
We'd have to discuss plan of action, but I think the first thing would be, yeah, is it rehabable or not would be questionable.
Well, then it's rebuildable too.
And we probably wouldn't know without. Not gonna, we're not gonna be able to get in there without having title, so we're not gonna know if it's habitable or not.
Good.
Don't say it, Roger, but just, just, just so you know, I've seen the house. That was in worse shape than rehab.
I have too.
Yeah. It takes it all the way down to.
Yeah. Yeah, so you can see through the whole house.
Yeah.
It can be done. Okay. Um, what do we got? We got a motion in a second. So let's, uh, let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yeah.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Good Wyler?
Yeah.
Alright, resolution twenty-two dash eighty. Providing a permanent easement agreement with Roger and Connie Loughlin for the relocation of an emergency siren.
So move.
Okay.
Anybody want? On that? I lost a big tree too. Not the little tree that I complained about, but I know. Hearing no other.
Pretty much in there in the cover sheet, the investigation, not a fun thing to go through, but, um. I think we're doing everything we can to be professional with it.
Yeah. Adam, Adam put it, put everything together.
Put this behind us and vote.
Vote please.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Sexton? Stulman?
Yes.
Good Wyler?
Yeah.
Dean?
No. Alright. Twenty-two dash eighty-one approving payment number two in the amount of five hundred eleven thousand, three hundred. Eighty dollars and seventy cents to Boomerang Corporation for the wastewater treatment facility. Motion please.
So move.
Need an explanation?
And get a bunch of work and now we got to pay him.
The hole's getting deeper. I haven't done it five for a while. Okay, I think we can move on, so let's, uh. No comment, but vote Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Good Wyler?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yeah.
Stulman?
No.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Alright, West Branch policeman, twenty-two dash eight-two approving the West Branch policeman.
Did this not do long ago?
Approving the.
Contrary.
Making of it.
No, they brought a big old thing and said, read this on the toilet at some point if you want. Yeah, so move.
Right.
No, it was our handbook.
Twenty fifteen after I started, they had, this is the new one. And I did send it separately. I didn't do it in the back.
That's why I never did.
And you, I didn't want to put two hundred.
Do you like it, chief?
The work in progress, so don't be worried though.
Go ahead. How about you, Kevin? Have you looked at it?
Uh, that's why we pay people to do this for us. Those are the people that keep up on it.
Alright, alright.
Alright, um. Let's vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Miller?
Yes.
Good Wyler?
Yeah.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yeah.
Alright, so illegal cigarette sales. Resolution twenty-two dash eighty-three accepting the payment. Three hundred dollars and fifteen hundred dollars civil penalties for come and go. Number two fifty-four. Motion please. Move. Next.
They're paying us money. So we don't, so we don't.
The next one, the next one is suspension for thirty days. They have, another one in the next three years will be a suspension in, uh, for thirty days.
We won't get money again? Get money again?
You get fifteen hundred dollars and a thirty day suspension next time.
Okay, okay.
Good explanation, good explanation.
And we don't even do.
Don't even.
Chief, put up, chief, put up.
The sheriff does, and I think the state, the state pays for them.
Um.
They have lost, they have lost their.
They're a pretty dude. That's a big ticket item.
Let's, let's. Let's go ahead and.
Councilperson Sexton, person Sexton?
Yeah.
Good Wyler?
Yeah.
Good Wyler?
Yeah.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Stulman?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Thanks, Kevin. Alright, discussion item, allowing the city administrator post-permanent full-time public works positions.
Um, this is budgeted. I just wanted to make you aware that when it's a permanent position, it does also affect our employee fund benefits. Um, just because hypers is due, um, in that nature. Um, hoping to get some help year round, not only just with mowing, but with snow removal. We've always had. Somebody help with snow removal, it just generally has not always been the same person. Um, we prefer to do it internally first, so there's our handbook. For doing it internally first, if no one applies, then we would have to advertise outside. Anything you would like to add, Matt? Alright, so just letting you guys know what's going on.
We posted for a permanent full-time position, right?
Correct.
Nothing posted where?
It'd be posted at City Hall.
I did it. Glad you did. That's right.
Got it.
Monday night, the Cowboys ordered one.
All right, the Muddix too.
Alright, uh, discussion of the city administrator update on police officer recruitment and, um, potential retention bonuses.
So not necessarily asking for you guys to vote on a retention. Policy, but it is going to take time to research and get everything in order. What brought this conversation into light was the fact that we've had the position, we had an officer position open for three months. And we really only got one qualified candidate. I wanna say very kindly phrases that outlook is not great if we, um. Have someone leave, um. Or that nature. I guess I've had the uncomfortable conversations of what do we do if we don't have anyone apply for our position? So I thought it would be best to at least entertain and research it, um, with Roger in chief. We wanted to bring that forward to you. Um, I gave you an example. It would come out of our officer that left. It would come out of his money that we would have paid him. There's about fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars sitting there that we would have paid him by the time this third officer starts. Fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty. Um, and this officer, number three, is gonna start even later than that, so we'll be even more with the room than that.
And truthfully, we'll be paying this fellow.
Less than.
No, we'll be paying this fellow when he's not even certified. We're gonna be paying this fellow to get certified.
Correct.
We'll be paying him while he's getting certified. And then we pay them when it's out of being certified, bringing, so our numbers actually. Cause we don't really have, we have a body, but we don't really have a home.
I didn't tell you certified. Uniformed office.
February?
March, maybe?
The, uh, serious category.
And that six week?
Six.
Fifteen, four months. Four months. April. April man.
Agreement for that though is, he, how many years does he have to be here to not have to pay them back? Or after he graduates.
And so we haven't done any formal contract with police officer number three. But typically we structure those for four years.
I have an idea.
For all years.
I don't think this is enough money to retain people. My, my idea would be, why don't we pay them a bunch of money upfront at the beginning of the year? And then you have to stay the whole year. And if you don't stay the whole year, then you gotta get that money back. So then they gotta try to figure out how they're gonna come up with that money to get back. And then as it gets towards the end of the year, they know they got this big check coming that they're willing to sign on again for the next year. I don't know if any of this is legal, but it sounds like a great idea.
That's, that's what we're, that's what we're thinking.
So basically, uh, my background comes from military, you know, and that's how they get you to re-enlist is to waive the money in front of your face. With the recruitment and retention, we have to look at it as we're competing against agencies that are already offering like ten thousand dollar sign-on bonuses.
And that was the number I was thinking.
Yeah. And we're looking at this number is, what can we feasibly offer that we can afford, you know, uh, right now? But basically, it's just, just the idea that you, you know, that, that, the idea that the bonus is bigger for the longer your commitment. Is, is for, and that's the same way the military structures it, you know, you, you sign on for six years, you. Your bonus should be double what it is for three, you know, nothing for one, but.
If you think of what it costs us to retain a, re-train, we, we retain a new officer. If we're paying three officers, even four officers, ten grand a year to stay, that's forty grand. We're gonna lose way more than that, just trying to replace. Officer three, as you call it.
Plus officer three is pretty green.
Yeah.
These are, these are.
Well, experienced. I'm not saying you waive, you give that, we already got him on the hook for four years, but we're gonna get.
Well, right.
But I'm talking about for, for these types of officers.
So throw my two cents in there, cause, um, I, I don't wanna lose an officer. But on the other hand, I don't like the idea that we are being, and I know we're in tough times now trying to find officers. But I don't like. Cause the council that have to be held hostage.
But see, we're actually doing it to them if we do it, if we do it that way.
But in say two years, he comes, somebody contacts, says, well, I'm ready to leave again. You gave me a bunch of money.
It was six months ago that we just gave him a raise because he was ready to leave then. I say let the goddamn son of a bitch go. I'm not gonna be held hostage by a police officer.
And I don't think you're wrong in, in thinking that, but to bring to the main point is we're not getting a lot of candidates and you don't.
I get that, so how do we fix that? Not, how do we retain what we have? How do we fix? The long term.
This could help us not have to look for somebody. Either way you fix it or not.
That is unfortunately, you either pay the people we already have.
We could open up the.
People we don't have.
We could open it up again and high, offer a higher salary.
Yep.
That's an experience of, that would cost.
Exactly. Take that eight thousand or sixteen thousand and throw it into certified officer's wage.
And I don't, it's new to me too, where we've had limited candidates and people have way more say than. You know, in a job, even when I was grow, growing up, it was employers hold the weight. It's a little bit different now, um. And I would say, I, I don't know if I see this going away. Anytime soon, because A, you've got the issues of people even wanting, wanting to enter the police force. But then two, I mean, we're talking real backend conversations that I'm not gonna say publicly, but what are we, what do we have to do to retain people? And that's essentially cutting services or, um. Yeah, cause there's not a lot of options on my end to raise, to raise taxes. I don't have a problem giving some kind of a bonus, but there has to be a stipulation to it. You have to stay or like you said, you're paying it back. It's like if you're going into the academy and we're paying for it, you have to stay here so many years to, or else you're paying that back. So if you put that in, in a savings account, you don't plan on staying here the whole time.
Well, I think that was the intention between, um, our discussion was that, I mean, it's not, it wouldn't be free money. It's, it has strings.
I mean, we can break that up into. Biannually or quarterly too, and I don't know, I just.
Well, I'm assuming, are we looking at doing the bonus upfront or?
Oh, I'd say upfront because then you're holding. You know, it's gonna cost them something to walk away.
So could they sign an agreement to receive this bonus? That they pay about?
We don't know if any of that's legal or turning around here. There's weird rules.
Yeah. I was gonna have Kevin chime in, but I'm, in terms of if it has to be a sliding scale or not, but I. Yeah.
You know, they don't allow us to do business like this.
So I guess that's my point is if you guys are interested in me going any further with these conversations. Cause as I have them, they're gonna, I mean, they're gonna come out one way or another.
And Jody, I wanna, just wanted to tell you, I'm not, not listening to what you're saying. I understand it. I, I, I hear you clearly. You know, but. At some point we gotta stop.
I'm, I'm back. Public safety.
I understand.
Since the day I've been on here, but when this came about. I would love to be able to give everybody that works for the town a raise.
The Des Moines school system of giving teachers a huge bonus not to retire. If they would stay a few more years.
Okay, but where are they getting that money? You gotta get that money from someone.
It's gonna take generations for them to buy it.
And, and Jody, to, to help some of that. The realization that this isn't a local problem, this is a national problem that we're trying to work our way through. And communities our size struggle more than communities that are larger than us. Um, and. And so we have to try to address some of those barriers that prevent certified officers from coming here. So that all has to be included in the long-term discussion on how department functions.
Let me city pay now.
Let me throw this out there.
Let me throw this out there, so if we're looking for officers. We don't have to pay somebody to go to school. Why would, why would we be looking to throw a bonus at somebody with kind of the same stipulation, you have to be here so many years? Or you lose that bonus to try to recruit.
Well, that would be the, that would be the intent, if we're gonna throw a retention bonus at somebody, we would be willing to then. Throw a recruitment bonus.
I get what you're saying, you know, if it's gonna end up costing us twenty five thousand dollars to put a. Officer three that's nineteen years old, or however old he may be through academy with no experience. Saying, hey, we'll, we'll give you twenty thousand dollars, you know, Iowa City's giving ten thousand dollar higher bonuses. Why can't we give twenty if it's already gonna cost us fifteen to get a officer? Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Yes, what you're saying makes sense, but we need direction because we don't really have the authority to just say. It's our advertising, here's all these signing bonuses. So what you're saying makes sense, we just wanna know where you guys stand, and I think to your point Jerry, in terms of getting somebody that's. Say certified from Iowa City, we're gonna have to offer them something that Iowa City doesn't, so whether that's. No on-call time, or whether that's. Something, because if somebody's jumping from Iowa City to West Branch. A lot of times in the police world, it's not necessarily always a great thing because of the pay difference. So there needs to be something that we're operating.
Twenty grand, but.
But it doesn't have to be from Iowa City, it could be from a, another community that's a little bit larger than us.
Right.
That somebody's willing to get a little bit more of a pay increase and come here.
Well, then I disagree because we're.
Bonus isn't a pain, bonus is a bonus. If you're gonna offer me five grand on my salary or twenty five hundred dollar retention bonus. I'm gonna take five grand salary every day, cause that's permanent, that's every year. You can't guarantee him a, that's why it's called a bonus. You can't guarantee me a bonus every year, we can come in very next year and say, hey, we're cutting bonuses. So you can throw a fifteen thousand dollar bonus, or if I can go to a job and get ten grand more on a salary permanent, I'm gonna take the ten grand and not take the extra five. Because I'm gonna keep earning money on that ten grand every year because it's gonna go up as part of my salary. Bonus you could just take out from under me anytime long. Rather take that fifteen grand that we have in the salary bonus, toss, but the thing is. We got fifteen grand tossed around every year, why don't we put it on a salary and pay somebody a salary instead of a one-time fifteen grand bonus? It's no smart officer gonna take a pay cut to get a one-time fifteen grand bonus. When their salary drops ten grand. And if they would accept that deal, I'm not quite sure, I want them to be police officers.
So basically I'll give you our three barriers that basically I can identify as an agency head of where our problems lie. Our pay is competitive for the size of city we are. However, since for our proximity to large areas, uh, and large jurisdictions. That pay doesn't appear competitive. And so that's barrier number one, barrier number two is what we require of our officers. You know, they'll work their forty hour week and then we require them to cover. Sometimes a double shift beyond that in standby time. Uh, that's probably your main barrier, uh, that I could identify is the on-call time. Just the ability as an officer where you can't, you can't shut down, like you're, you go home and you sit there and you sit there and sit there waiting for a call. And then the, the third barrier would be the residency district, so a lot of people that are established. As officers get to a point where they're like, nope, I'm not moving, you know, I have family, I've. I have a house that I've been paying on for fifteen years, I'm not, not moving, so. Those are the three barriers that I can readily identify right now. That if we address may make us more attractive to, uh, certified officers.
Right now our limit, like our, uh, out of city limit, limit is twenty miles.
And that's, and that is that way because we require the on top, on-call time, and so you require a certain level of response, you know. Inside of that, you go out much past eighty miles and you're talking response times that. You know, somebody's breaking in your house and you gotta wait twenty minutes. Long time.
Right now Cedar County's helping cover some of our time.
Right now we cover a hundred percent of our time.
Well, Cedar County's not.
They, they help us out occasionally, but there's no formal agreement for them to cover any of our.
Is there any opportunity to have a kind of an agreement with Cedar County to cover any of our?
I, I think those conversations could be had. But you may wanna brace yourself for what that may come with on strings.
And it would just be on-call time, all I'm talking, not.
Yeah, but.
Cut down on our on-call time for officers would, would give them a. Better opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, the, the reduction on-call time, I mean, I, you could probably. Call our department and somebody would rather not be on-call as opposed to getting a raise. I mean, it's that intrusive to your life.
So looking at Cedar County might be an option, we can maybe explore, trying to see what we might.
Here's my question though.
If you give Cedar County, then we don't have to pay insurance, we don't have to pay hyper, we don't have to pay.
I understand.
We would pay their balance.
Here's my, here's my concern is if up to this point, we didn't want our officers to be more than eight miles out of the city limits. Because we, we weren't gonna give quality service from the day we were on call. Now we're going to enlist somebody that's seventeen, eighteen miles out of. Our city limits, pay them the money to do something that we wouldn't pay somebody that. Like nine months now, or, you know, until two or three years ago, you didn't even have the option to be not in the city.
Yeah, let me, let me throw this out. Far as I know, Solon still doesn't have a police department.
No.
And Johnson County covers them.
Neither's Tiffin, neither's Lone Tree, neither's the elves.
So, I mean, we are very fortunate to have a police force in West Branch. And some of our other communities don't even have a police force, and they get covered. Same deal, and Johnson County's got a long way to go.
Yeah, you gotta also remember that. West Branch is the only town in Cedar County on, yeah, west side of the river. So, we're twenty-five miles, twenty-two miles from any other community. In Cedar County. They're not gonna, they're not gonna have a car over on this side. They're gonna keep their cars more centrally located in Cedar County.
Yep, we have a car in.
That's one of their homes not working.
Well, I'm just saying.
West Liberty is also closer.
All I'm saying, I'm not.
What about the state troopers that find the need to come into our town and pull people?
Okay, so.
They wanna be here running.
We're also at two ends of, two different posts. We're at the end of two posts. They're not gonna hang out at the end.
They already do.
That's because of our interstate.
That's why I said Johnson, because I mean, they are close.
Yeah, so I, I would have a hard time. Cause we have a great working relationship with both sheriff's offices and. Uh, I don't even know if they can legally.
Yeah, that was my, I don't even know if we can legally guard at Johnson County.
Well, now part of our town is in there a lot.
I've never seen a car out there. That's kinda what I was getting at, technically West Branch. Part of West Branch is in Johnson County.
I see the cars in town all the time, they're going to the Ford dealers.
Boy, you think.
It's closer than.
He probably doesn't even know.
I think the bonus idea probably has some traction.
I think it's worth talking, in my opinion, both counties. Our department goes over and covers. That's what I mean, so I mean, I don't understand why we don't have any chance to have. I mean, they can tell us, why is it guy or tell us it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but at least we're asking, in my opinion. Either that or like, calling everybody saying, we got a, John, we got a Cedar County police officer that's thirty miles away, closes. Inside Iowa City. Eight minutes.
So how far off are we on wages and money wise, if it's all down to money? How far off are we?
Johnson County starts experience at seventy-five.
We're probably talking another twenty per officer, another twenty thousand per officer.
So the seventy-five is, eh, for Johnson County is a two-year officer, two years.
Okay, so, so we're never gonna retain this new officer. Because.
Every year till they build, they're done paid for.
That's up, that's gonna be up to.
Why?
Unity, the chief and myself to retain him, but yes, it's gonna be a tough task.
Into, uh, yeah, because in two years, if I can go somewhere else and get a sign up, ten thousand dollar sign on bonus. That'll pay for my leaving West Branch.
So that's, that's up to this community and chief and myself to retain them.
Well, I'll just buy a box of guns, let everybody just come get.
Year or so ago that we have maybe some kind of a program where, um, we have more. Ring, doorbell, where we have more. More security cameras throughout our community. But if there is something goes on. It's easy to. It's a lot easier to get something off of a camera than. Pretty, pretty obvious when you have the video of it happening. So I don't know if that's something we should look into. Ring, ring, the ring doorbell, they have pretty good.
So, yeah, I'm gonna stray off a path a little bit, but, but not really. So a guy approached me here a while back from. He was a, he did the wifi internet. He explained to me that a high, super high-power wifi internet. Was like the Nile River, you know, when everybody that had this. You know, when, back when the Nile River development was happening, everybody wanted to be on the river, cause that's where the action. Well, he could offer this special, super duper. Internet that only six or eight communities in the whole nation had. It was better than the internet that the University of Iowa has. And he could come put it around our town, and one of the benefits to doing that would be. That we could put cameras, since we own the internet. He could, we could put cameras anywhere we want, didn't cost nothing but the amount for the camera. We ran our own internet. I'll put cameras everywhere. And this dude said that, I don't remember how much money he said it would cost, but he said it'd pay for itself for ten months.
Reason I bring this up is cause a year or so ago. Um, my son has rental property on Second Street. And a big chunk of tree came down. Nobody knew what happened. And three or four doors down. From that property, they had a doorbell, a camera, and it had video of how, what happened to that tree. Yeah. There are four doors away.
We have a camera right on Main Street, right there by Town Hall, and we, somebody stole a bunch of cans from the. Boy Scouts, sitting out behind Parkside. And we never could figure out who did it, or the camera, or the little panel.
That's pretty low, I'm sorry, but, dang.
Alright, let's, uh. For the point, I guess, uh, the bonus has some traction. City Administrator Report.
A couple things, just kinda wanted you aware of, I'm working with ECIA on possible. Buyout grants for properties that are in the floodway, there are a lot that are. Probably not up to code, so we'll see, um, if there's any type of program, we'll, we'll bring it for council and to. To view it, but just know I'm doing that, that kinda research, just because when we start hitting property maintenance a little bit harder. Um, I assume. We're gonna have a lot of properties in the floodway that, um, banks won't. Will own or insurance companies will insure, so. Um, thought that's an easier way out than to play chicken with everybody in town, it would be nice to have a program available. We'll see if something comes out of it or not. And then we're still talking Uber Hometown Day updates, um, we're meeting. Matt a little bit today, just to talk about what to do in the interim for next year, and then we'll have another meeting tomorrow. Uh, but hopefully we'll have something to present to you guys soon. Uh, I'm meeting as well with, uh, West Branch Community Development Group. Um, on possible joint positions. I'm hoping to have that by next meeting or in October.
That's unrelated to the.
Correct, 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 thank you for that. I'm gonna put a little bit of pressure on, uh, people that live on Lancaster. There's a cul-de-sac in the middle of, uh. Lancaster that no one mows, and I went through all the nineteen seventy-three records. And it's completely city right of way, so unless somebody starts mowing it, it will be one more thing for the city to mow. Just an FYI, there are more things that we're getting this.
Yep.
And how much would it cost to move that? Main right in the middle of the streets.
I mean, Weaver and I used to share that.
Move it, pave it, be nowhere.
curb and gutter there.
I suppose you could just do.
And not to get you guys talking, but that's just. Stuff that we didn't know in nineteen seventies what would happen, we've had some good neighbors in town that have just stepped up and mowed certain properties. Um, but just know there could be more mowing list on public works list if we don't.
How big is?
Not, it's just.
It's hard to get a, well, everybody can hardly get a snowplow around a day.
Without backing up, I push mow it or weed whack it. Sometimes I just weed whack the whole thing. Have a hard time going my own way, let alone.
The end of September, Roger and I will be in Waterloo for the Iowa League of Cities Conference. Yes. That's it for me. That's it for me.
Okay, Kevin's not here. Uh, Dave, second juror, you have anything to report?
Updates on a few projects. The wastewater plant project, uh, the passment we approved was primarily for the excavation as well as piping and structures. They've. Procured some of the equipment already after we reviewed the submittals and that's a pretty significant cost. The POs have to be in an order for the equipment to be held and then manufactured. So they do have in their contract on their pay estimate. Uh. Where some of the equipment. Purchase price type of an arrangement. So. That's a majority of the cost now is the blowers and, and some of the other long lead time equipment that we had to put a down payment on. Uh, they're also working on trying to do some revisions to uh deal with some long lead, um, supply chain issues, some larger piping, the fittings on that. Uh, very difficult to get those. So we've looked at replacing some of those bends with manholes and they're working through that with the contractor that's at no cost to the city. It's just to um. Avoid the excessive lead times and some of the, uh, the price increases that are resulting from not having. The ability to get those locked in. The, uh, the roundabout project, we're continuing to work with the county on that as well as coordinate with the school and the developer that's interested in Meadows three A. We didn't meet with that developer last week and are working through some of the uh. Requests or uh coordination items with county and just trying to get that worked into our design to see if there's uh some things we can do to benefit both parties. Heritage Hill submitted some revised drawings. I got those today. Review those and provide comment. Uh, the creek widening project, we have been working with Impact Seven G. They provided last week the preliminary creek realignment for the channel. Stabilization project. We're building a surface in our model and we'll. Put that into our flood model and evaluate the profiles to make sure that we're still achieving the reduction in flood elevation that we're after, after incorporating that. Adam and I have been working with DOT on some agreements uh for the I eighty, uh, the Box Culver and, and other items, just to make sure that everything looks appropriate. Provided some comments and they're going to work on getting some wording revised to get those back to us. Aside from that, been working on some site plan reviews and then also, um, Adam and I have been talking about trying to get this east side water main moving forward by putting in a phase one. Which has the street reconstruction and water main and try to get that agreement to you. Get started on that and then we would follow up with phase two, which would be eligible for SRF funding to try to get the IUP application in. That IUP application is about six to nine months uh before we can do much with the project. So that would work well with. Trying to get that done in a two-year timeframe, but we'll, we'll get started on that and get, get something in front of council. So we can get that project moving. That's what I have.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Sounds like you're busy. Thank you. City staff. Anyone? Any comments, uh, mayor and council?
If I have anything.
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
So is the roundabout really? Not big enough? For buses, tractors and fire trucks. To make it around without bouncing over the curb? Is this true?
The design for the roundabout is that they would go over the center portion for larger vehicles. That's a multiple curb and the colored concrete portion, the apron is designed to drive over for the larger vehicles.
So they're gonna have a slanted curb? Or a straight up and down six-inch curb?
On the interior portion, that would be a sloped curve so that they could drive over that. The outside, the current plan is to have that with a standard curve, a six-inch high curve.
Second. What are we doing about the fences in the right of way?
By the way, where?
The new development.
This pertains to the roundabout?
No, I've heard you.
I can bring that up for a formal discussion. Think that would help. Um. I could tell you at least for Meadows part five, that forty-foot easement is due. Based on, and Dave can correct me too, but I think because of how Greenview was developed. That's why there needs to be such a huge. Easement along there. Is that correct, Dave?
Yes, and Matt and I had looked at that to see if we could reduce that at all. Uh, but there is an existing easement there for sanitary sewer that already takes up a fair amount of that backyard and the stormwater easement was south of that. So it extended that overall easement. Uh, they just captured the sanitary in that. So, um. We're, we're looking at it to see if there's a possibility to reduce that a little bit to help with the fence situation.
Oh, sanitary sewer is that a twenty-foot easement? Sanitary easement?
I think that's correct from memory, but I don't have that plaque in front of me, Roger.
We'll give you a formal update next meeting. All right, anybody, anything else? Pushing to adjourn? All those favors say ah.